It is now seven oh two and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fazdik.
Here.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Present.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mr. Carubus, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next Board of Education meeting will be Monday, February seventh, and we will be holding a special Board of Education meeting, executive session, this Wednesday, January twenty-sixth. So we have two board salutes. Ms. Demming.
Wabonzi Valley Senior Named Student of the Month. The Board salutes Wabonzi Valley Senior Leslie Panigawa, who was named the Technology Center of DuPage January Student of the Month. Technology Center of DuPage offers DuPage County area high school seniors and juniors career and technical education programs as part of their high school curriculum. In addition to high school credit, TCD students may concurrently earn dual credit by enrolling at no cost with the college during the designated timeframe. Leslie is enrolled in the Nursing A training program. Congratulations, Leslie.
Ms. Jane.
The Board salutes the numerous District two oh four students who recently won awards at the Chicagoland Google Educator Group Film Festival. The annual film festival provides an opportunity for K through twelve students to become empowered and flex their creative muscles. Students were challenged to create a film under two minutes that responds to this year's theme, Imagine. Congratulations to Mahika Agrival, first grader at Owen Elementary, who was awarded the elementary grand prize for her video, My Unicorn World. Maya Castler Torres, second grader at Owen Elementary, who won in the category of Best Sports Film for her video, Imagine, Maya's Basketball Journey, Practice Makes Perfect. And to Nikwell Valley Seniors Katrina Marzutsky and Melissa Rambunsun, Mia Willis and Ashley Robinson, who won for Excellence in Storytelling for their video, The Treasure of Regnum. There were also numerous honorable mentions for students in elementary, middle, and high school. Congratulations to all these students on this wonderful accomplishment.
Okay, next we have our student representative report by Nithya Malapudi from Wabonzi Valley High School.
Good evening. My name is Nithya Malapudi and I am a senior at Wabonzi Valley High School as well as the IPSD Board of Education Student Representative. At WVHS, we are very thankful to be able to have everyone back in the building as we are on stepping stones to getting back to normal as soon as possible. Exchange Day took place this past week where freshmen through juniors took part in an opportunity to explore different courses that they can take next school year. Exchange Day allowed students to learn all about varieties of the courses offered that can help prepare them for their future and the academic opportunities that they have available to them, that can help with their college, career, and personal goals. Because seniors will be at college next year, they were able to participate in two different seminars of their choice related to their post-secondary education as well as important information about finishing senior year. There are numerous Warriors advancing to the regional level in the PTA National Reflections Contest. Congratulations. The Wabonzi Valley Cyber Patriot Team took first place in the Silver Tier of State. The Cyber Patriot competition simulates real-world cybersecurity scenarios and requires students to find and fix weak security policies within Windows ten, Windows Server twenty nineteen, and Ubuntu twenty operating systems. In the Pre-Leg Two Conference, Dub V Youth and Government had a successful conference. Warriors legislators had one top priority and two second priority bills. Special shout-outs to two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three Chief Justice State Candidate Gavin Abenezer for qualifying out of the five candidate field and to two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three Governor Candidate Hamna Hack, who was just edged by fifteen votes for the region's top officer spot, finishing second in the competitive five-person field. The Dub V PTA held a snack drive during the first week back from winter break. Thank you to everyone who participated and made donations. Save the date. On February second, two thousand and twenty-two, the class of two thousand and twenty-six orientation will take place. We are so excited to welcome the class of two thousand and twenty-six to the original valley. At the eighth grade open house, you will hear from school leaders about making the transition to high school, course selection, academics, and involvement at Wabonzi Valley. Details and additional resources will be communicated closer to the event date. We look forward to welcoming you to the Warrior Nation. Another save the date. This February tenth through twelfth at seven PM in the Dub V auditorium, Wabonzi Valley Theater is performing And They Dance Real Slow in Jackson. It is about a young lady who is crippled at birth by polio, who is confined to a wheelchair and must wear leg braces. As a result, she deals with challenges such as making friends and small-town prejudices. We hope to see you there. Wabonzi Valley alumni Sarah Griffith was selected in the third round of the National Women's Soccer League Draft by the Chicago Red Stars. She was the thirty-fifth overall pick. Griffith played at Purdue University and was selected as the Big Ten Forward of the Year and also holds the Boil Maker's record for most goals scored in a season with sixteen. Congratulations. And once a Warrior, always a Warrior. We are so proud of you. The Warriors Hockey Club has been doing amazing things. They beat Maine High School six-five in a thrilling win. Congratulations. Boys Swimming had their senior night and we are so proud of them. Arnab Deshpande broke the pool record for the fastest one-hundred backstroke with a time of forty-nine point seven-nine and set a pool record. Congratulations. Wabonzi Valley's boys' basketball team won against Nikwell Valley in an enticing sixty-two to fifty-four win. According to Greg Voss from Daily Herald, "All it takes is one really solid quarter." Great job, Warriors. That is all for the IPSD School Board Report from Wabonzi Valley for the date of January twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two. My name is Nithya Malapudi. It was a pleasure to speak to you all tonight. I hope everything else runs smoothly and as always, go Warriors.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. And we will, we only have five speakers tonight, but you still are limited to three minutes and we will cut you off at the three-minute mark. So thank you. Our first speaker is Colin Singer.
Hello. My name is Colin Singer. I'm an eighth grader in the PA program at Gregory Middle School. I'm here to speak out the mask mandate. It's unfair to have a face covering over my face for seven hours a day when there are three vaccine doses available and I'm at the lowest rate for hospitalization and death. I myself have asthma and it's really unfair to make me run laps and play sports in gym class with something that restricts my breathing even further. If my teachers feel like wearing masks, so be it. I could care less if someone chooses to. It's their opinion. In the United States, hospitalizations of minors take up a whopping zero-point-zero-two percent. I'll say that again. Hospitalizations of minors take up zero-point-zero-two percent. Is this a number that you're scared of? Is this the number that makes it so that my brother, who's just entered middle school, has difficulties talking to his friends at lunch because they sit two seats apart? Is this the number that is going to keep us in this madness? Is this the number that will separate children from their friends at school? You say you follow the studies, but may I ask which ones? The ones I have seen say that doctors think that it's better to have natural immunity to Omicron because of how not dangerous it is to the wide majority of people. Are we trying to stay in this pandemic? Are we trying to alienate literally everyone wherever they go? If the masks work so well, we would be out of this. You act like it is a job of children to make you feel safe. In fact, it is the complete opposite. It is your job to make us feel safe and I don't feel safe when you scare and worry kids about a virus, when they're at far greater risk from dying in a car crash, yet we still drive cars. The reward is greater than the risk. We have to stop living in this alienated society that is being pushed as a norm. There have been six suicides in our district this year. Six kids have killed themselves during a time when mental health for children is at its worst. And it's not a coincidence that this happened during COVID because the CDC has proven that COVID affects children's mental health. We have to stop enforcing and mandating these things that so far have not helped at our school. We still see our friends every weekend without masks. There have been parties, there have been hangouts in people's basements. None of us are masking for. We're all trying to get back to normal, so let us do it. I think that adults have moved on too. On any given night, the bars and restaurants in downtown Naperville are absolutely packed. So why are we the kids bearing your burden? Stop masking kids, understand that the reward is far greater than the risk, and let us go back to how it was. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan Singer.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and school board members. My name is Ryan Singer. I'm the mom of two middle school boys. I'm here tonight to revisit the topic of masks in school and the harm being inflicted on our kids. Since February of last year, when our kids finally returned to in-person learning, these kids have been masked. Since August of this year, they are now being masked seven to eight hours a day. We're now learning what many of us have known for a long time. These cloth masks or disposable masks are barely effective in preventing transmission of the virus. More importantly, we're also learning of all the negative impacts that masking our kids have caused. There have been huge increases in the number of kids with speech delays and impairments. As the mom of a son with a severe speech delay and years of therapy, it's not hard to imagine why. We learn by mimicking. We also learn social cues by seeing each other's expressions. These kids have not seen each other's faces for two years. We have a record number of kids and teens seeking help for anxiety, depression, self-harm behavior. Suicide rates among teens have skyrocketed. Right here in our own district and neighboring communities, we've seen an exorbitant number of suicide. The district has acknowledged this to a degree by introducing Mental Health Days. That is great, but when are we going to examine the cause and the rise? The correlation to what we've done to these kids for over two years is obvious. If these masks were effective, the data would show it, but in truth, the data proves how ineffective they actually are. The clearest evidence is to look at neighboring states that don't have a mask mandate. Our numbers are no better and in many cases, they are worse. I have a sixth and eighth grader. Their last normal school year was third and fifth grade respectively. That is appalling. The mayor of Naperville is now asking, "Why are we still masking if the data shows it's totally ineffective?" Good question, Mr. Mayor. Maybe this Board and our superintendent can join forces with our mayor and advocate for our kids before it's too late. We know this terrible impact school shutdowns had on kids. Those repercussions are still being felt and will be for some time. Now we have clear data showing masks don't work. We live in an area with some of the highest vaccination rates, yet recently, we've seen numbers higher than at any point during this whole pandemic. For two full years, our kids have endured isolation, numerous unnecessary nasal swab tests, quarantine, social distancing at school, and masks all day. At this point, everyone who desires the vaccine has had their chance. A huge segment of the population has natural immunity, which we also know is probably more effective than the vaccine. And as great as this vaccine is to prevent you from dying, we know that you can still get the virus and you can still transmit it to others. The truth is, though, this virus causes almost no severe risk in kids, certainly not any more than the regular flu. Most experts have also said we're going to have to learn to live with this. For those that feel this is their new normal, so be it. We're in N-ninety-five if that makes you feel safer. No one will ever take away your choice to continue to mask, but I for one, I'm done. I'm done sacrificing my children's well-being to make anyone feel safer. Please stop our kids from bearing the brunt of this pandemic. Give them back their normalcy. Let them see each other's smiling faces in the halls. Let them be kids. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe George.
Respected Board members and district officials, my name is Joe George and I live in the ponds of Ashwood. We, as a community, have reached out to all of you on multiple occasions, voicing our concerns and distress with what we felt was a hasty change and decision concerning the three schools that are assigned to us. You are probably sick of hearing from us, but I hope you understand how much this has shaken our small community. We have posed several questions to the Board without complete answers. We have submitted concrete data and felt neglected as there were no concrete answers given to us, just as the Board has decided and there is no going back. All the neighborhoods surrounding us have retained all three of their schools, whereas ours has had all three schools changed now for the second time since two thousand and eighteen. Our small community will not affect the attendance numbers of any of the schools, nor cause increased transportation costs to the district. We want to have some normalcy for our kids, especially in this day and age, even with the grandfathering plan built in to the decision. My child would have to choose between her teachers and classmates versus her family and go to two different middle schools. Our children would have to take a bus to middle school, now mind you, passing by middle schoolers from other further subdivisions to go to a middle school that is farther away while those children pass by the middle school now assigned to my child to attend our existing middle school. This all the while where she could just be walking across the street. It just doesn't make any sense to us. This is just a couple of examples that we have not gotten answers to. I implore you to put yourselves in our shoes. Not just one school, but all our schools were changed for the second time in three years, four years. Why change our schools now again? Why change our schools while all the other children in surrounding neighborhoods have kept their schools? Mistakes are made when actions are taken in haste. Please do the right thing and rectify this mistake to our community. Once again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah George.
Good evening, respected Dr. Tally and all the Board members. I wanted to let you know that how important your decisions are in my children's life and our subdivision children's lives. Your recent decision of changing all our current schools to the far distant schools have created havoc in our day-to-day life. Me and my subdivision, Pond Members, have been trying to bring all the issues into your attention with this repeated school changes. However, none of the response showed that you would revisit the plan. Therefore, today, I just decided to humbly ask you three questions. Very first one, how is changing our middle and high school helping aligning with your district goals? The second question I have is please tell me the drawbacks of us having to retain our middle and high school. The third question, why is just Pond's changing the school, all the schools, when all our neighborhood subdivisions get to retain their current schools? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Sachin Sharma.
Dear Board members and district administration, my name is Sachin Sharma and I'm a parent and resident of Pond's at Ashwood Park South. I stood here a couple of weeks ago and I'll continue to do so till the voices of our community are heard. Two weeks ago, you finalized the attendance area assignment for Pond's with a three-hour notice to our community. Your seven votes sealed the fate of our thirteen families, causing immense disruption, uprooting kids who'd settled after a school change just three years back. We've continued to highlight the severity of this impact in scale, frequency, and suddenness of change. Our community has repeatedly asserted why this change feels discriminatory. Across the district's two-twenty subdivisions, we are the only one with all three schools being changed in three years. With this change, Pond's will experience the highest increase in commute time for high school. We'll also be one of the two subdivisions with the worst commute time across the district. We've shared comprehensive data to explain the above facts. You've suggested other communities have been equally and severely affected, yet you failed to provide any data to support that. And even if you did, it's even worse if more communities are so adversely affected. We've also explained how this change does not meet seven out of nine boundary criteria defined by you. Yet, retaining our current schools meets them all. If this benefits your overall criteria and community, how can this conflict with your goals? It's also clear we are being singled out due to our size. We've seen you listen to larger communities over eight months and retain their schools, yet you refuse to listen to us, who only had three hours to absorb this decision. Dr. Tally refused to meet us, citing fairness. If no other community is as severely affected, how can meeting us be unfair to anyone? As you've suggested, if meeting in public and broadcasting is the only option, we are all for it. Because your email responses have failed to address why such a severe change was inflicted upon us in so hasty a manner, nor have they indicated any desire to rectify it. As elected officials, your first responsibility is to address concerns of communities you serve, yet you've chosen to disregard our voices. Even though all facts point to an unfair error, you refuse to acknowledge and rectify it. We ask you again to reinstate our schools. By not doing so, you are gravely harming our small community. Rectifying this will only elevate your stature as public officials, for you would have acted on reason, objectivity, fairness, redressal, and empathy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we move to our consent agenda items and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report.
Ms. Donahue, thank you, members of the Board and the Indian Prairie community. I will start my comments off by sharing some sad news about the passing of an Indian Prairie pioneer, Mr. Carl Pennell, on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I call him a pioneer because he worked in Indian Prairie before it actually was a school district. He was principal of Wheatland Elementary School. He had thirty-seven years with the district, which includes his three years before the district was formed in nineteen seventy-two. He was also principal of Cloud and Springbrook Elementary Schools before he retired in two thousand and six. There are some people here on the Board who actually have personal experiences with Mr. Pennell. We hope his family knows how much of a difference he made to our children. At the last Board meeting, I mentioned we are examining the process to bring shield testing to the district. Some parents have expressed interest in this testing. In talking with the company that does the testing, it would take anywhere from three to six weeks to set up the program. We will make a decision by this week if we will pursue this program. Until then, I am hopeful that people have signed up for their at-home testing that will be sent to people through the United States Postal Service. This week, this past week, and over the next couple of weeks, students in grades K through eight are being assessed in our new iReady Reading and Math Assessment. This assessment tool is replacing the AMES Web Assessment we normally give at this time of the year. iReady will provide our teachers with more information about the reading and math abilities of our children and provide additional resources to support students who may be struggling in those two academic areas. The details of the assessments will also help schools zero in on the supports that are needed in their schools that will support the children. I hope that many of you will consider participating in the Inspire Twenty-two IPF fundraiser that is scheduled to take place on March eleventh. The event, which showcases our talented Indian Prairie School District students, musicians, vocalists, artists, while supporting the mission of the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation. IPF has been part of Indian Prairie for more than three decades. IPF was instrumental in establishing our Fine Arts Festival and in supporting other great causes over the years, including our A-plus Award for teachers through collaboration with Wells Fargo Advisors. There's a great partnership with the district and I know that this fundraiser will continue the great work of supporting our children. Consult ipf204.org for ticket information. And finally, I want to say that on Thursday night, we will have our first of four Strategic Planning Committee meetings. These meetings will allow the district to write its first strategic plan. Though the district has been strategic in the past, we will now codify a strategic plan that will look outward for the next few years with specific goals and, more importantly, actions or strategies that will help us. A strategic plan will help us align all of our resources, plan for the future needs of the district, and codify what the community feels is important for the district. I want to thank all the people who agreed to be part of the process. We will have parents, students, staff, and community members participating in these meetings. Now I'll turn it back over to Ms. Donahue.
Madam President, can I say a word about Mr. Pennell, please?
Yes, for sure.
Mr. Pennell was my principal back in elementary school. I offer him and his family my prayers and support. The family will be celebrating Carl Pennell's life in April and they'll be sending out more information as it becomes available. Thank you.
Thank you. He also was the principal for my children at Springbrook, so I know he will be greatly missed. Next, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion and a second for our consent agenda items D through K.
Make a motion, Board of Education, approve consent agenda items D through K as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yeah.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding dismissal of tenured teacher as presented.
I make a motion to approve the motion as presented for dismissal of teacher.
Second. Any discussion? Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Fazdik.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Grover. Mr. Rising.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next is our discussion item. We will now have a social-emotional learning update presented by the following staff and students. Candy Michelli, Dawn Forkner, Anthony Pap, Jamie Hood, Tanya Shay, Deb Kimino, Shelley Kelsey, Janine Wang, Brandy Bane, Grace Besler, Michelle Durick.
People's not big enough.
I know. I did include a little logistics. Welcome to everybody.
Good evening. I'm Candy Michelli, Director of Professional Learning, and would like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Tally for the opportunity to update the Indian Prairie School District community on the topic of social-emotional learning, wellness, and mental health. The presentation this evening is in support of our district goal one, help all students grow socially, emotionally, and academically, as well as Board Policies six-ten, six-sixty-five, and seven-ten. As in our memo, before we begin the presentation tonight, we are pleased to share that we are in our second full year of implementation of our district-wide social-emotional learning program. We have district and building-level leadership teams that consistently meet to discuss ongoing professional learning, possible adjustments to structures, routines, and our lessons for each level, and ways buildings have responded to the increase of social-emotional needs, especially during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Dawn Forkner, our Social Emotional Learning and Wellness Coordinator. As you know, this is a new position to our team and Dawn has done a wonderful job supporting our staff and students in the implementation of our social-emotional learning program and has led the efforts to increase staff certification and youth mental health first aid. Tonight, Dawn and I are joined by a fabulous group of staff and students who will highlight several activities that occur beyond the school bell to support students' social, emotional well-being, and mental health. And for logistic purposes, we do have an occasional game of musical chairs to properly fit all our presenters at the table for their portion of the presentation. And if possible, it may be easiest if questions or comments are reserved for the end of the presentation. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dawn.
Thank you. As we hear more about the social-emotional learning extracurricular activities available to students, it's important to reflect on our social-emotional learning statement as it relates to developing safe and trusting relationships and building a culture of acceptance and resilience amongst our students. At this time, I would like to share with you three programs that are making a positive impact on our students outside of the classroom. These programs were initiated by staff or students based on a recognized need or interest. Sponsors are funded by club stipends. The first presentation, Fit Young Learners at Young Elementary School, is a before-school program that combines physical illness with emotional well-being. The program is facilitated The program is facilitated by young staff, Tony Pape, Tanya Shay, and Jamie Hood. The second, The Falcon Nest at Fisher Middle School, is led by Deb Kimmonow and Shelley Kelsey. It offers students an opportunity to peacefully transition into their school day. Finally, Mental Health Matters at Matia Valley High School is a club that encourages students to develop positive wellness habits and strategies. Mental Health Matters is facilitated by Matia's staff members, Janine Wang and Brandy Bane. Janine and Brandy will be joined tonight by two 10th-grade club members, Grace Fessler and Michelle Jurek. At this time, I would like to welcome Tony, Tanya, and Jamie.
Dr. Tally, members of the board, thank you so much for this opportunity to share. My name is Tony Pape, and my Phil name is Brick. And I am one of the creators and leaders of Fit Young Learners, or Phil. The mission of Phil is to invigorate student leadership, self-esteem, academic achievement by providing guided exercise of the mind, soul, and body. When creating Phil, I was looking for a way to create a space where students could develop mental fortitude, resilience, and a sense of purpose while participating in authentically difficult workouts and conversations. Currently in Phil, we have about 35 students, about a quarter of our fifth graders that are eligible to participate. They come every week. In every session, students engage in 30 minutes of vigorous exercise. We read a chapter from Way of the Warrior Kid by Jaco Willink. We discuss the topics of the chapter together. We listen to the leaders give their input, and then the students are allowed to give theirs as well. We end with a takeaway question that the students will write down in their weekly planner, and we give 30 seconds of reflection time at the end of every workout. Then the students go and get changed and go to class. During the workout, students engage in extremely vigorous exercise. This is not getting out your wiggles. This is not a run club. This is not intramurals. This is not recess. This is hard exercise. Students do burpees. They carry around weight. The other day, we made them run around with their backpacks on because we were stuck inside, and we needed to make it harder. Students carry around, well, carry around mats on their shoulders and emulate things that the SEAL teams practice in their BUDS training. And leaders participate in the workout with the students. At no point is anybody telling a student to do something. Instead, we are participating with them in these activities. During this time, we teach a concept we call Pick Up the Six. The six in a military term is the person in the rear. So while we are exercising, students are encouraged, if they finish their reps early, to pick up the six, to go back to the guy in the back or girl in the back, and make sure that they're able to finish. Oftentimes, I yell out Thank the Six because without the six, you wouldn't be able to do extra work yourself, which just makes you that much stronger. Now, I know what you're thinking. Why did he say his name was Brick? In Phil, we encourage the students to pick a Phil name. Much like a military call sign, the students pick a name that represents themselves. I do tell the students, if it's too cool, I will pick a name for you that is less cool. This helps the students to, A, give them a little bit of a chance to be somebody else when they're with us. Oftentimes, our students are coming from very different backgrounds, different things that are happening at home, and it's hard to be brave or strong sometimes when you have the name of the person at home that may be struggling with things. This also gives us a chance to kind of laugh at each other's names and get to know each other at a different level. We, as the leaders, as well, take on those Phil names. During the chapter that we read in Way of the Warrior Kid, Jaco Willink wrote this book. He's a Navy SEAL. He is also a very well-known business presenter and entrepreneur. And he writes a story about Mark. Mark is a fifth-grade boy getting ready for sixth grade. He cannot swim. He cannot do a pull-up. He doesn't know his times tables, and he gets bullied every day. So in this book, Mark's Uncle Jake comes to visit with him, and Uncle Jake makes Mark do things that are difficult: wake up early, face his fears, learn his times tables. And the theme of the book comes out to be that nothing that he's doing is special. It really boils down to hard work. After we read each chapter, students are encouraged to discuss with us their feelings on the topic that we talked about. We give them insight as well. The goal eventually is to have community members be able to participate in this group. So not only are they hearing from us as leaders about how these things affect us as adults, but people in their community as well. And as our schools open up more, I really hope that we're able to do that more. After that, we, you know, we discuss, we get out of our way. But then we plan ahead for the next week. So in your packets that I gave you, there's the battle planner. In the battle planner, you'll see that students are asked to reflect on their gratitude, things that they have to accomplish both educationally and emotionally, a to-do list, and, most important, the essential question. After every chapter or workout, we ask the students an essential question that will relate back to what we did. It might be things like, what are you afraid of? It might be things like, what is your personal code? It might be a thing like, how can I pick up the six this week? All of those things are asked the students to write down. We do not collect these planners. We do not see what the kids write in these planners. It is completely optional, and yet every kid willingly takes one on their way out. You will also see at the bottom, we implemented the zones of regulation because we do want students to be able to self-reflect on where they're sitting after that. Before I pass it off to my esteemed colleagues here, I just wanted to kind of share one thing, things that I have seen from Phil this year. I've seen a fifth grader let down his guard and share that he can't swim to a group of 30 of his fellow students. I've seen one of the smallest members push and eventually leave the pack. I've seen Phil students hold each other accountable in hallway and classrooms. I've had students push me to give it my all during workouts and while teaching. And most importantly, I've watched as kid after kid leaves a brutal workout and has a hard conversation, and they're standing taller and walking prouder than they arrived. I'll give it over to Tanya.
Hi, I'm Tanya Shay. I'm the school psychologist at Young. And when Tony came to me, you can see and feel his passion about this, I got really excited, not about the intense workout part. And when he says intense workout, I am always sore Friday morning, without fail. And so we decided, and we're talking about how to make it relate, and I loved the, you know, putting a book with it and us discussing it, especially because the book is all about self-esteem, confidence, doing something out of your comfort zone. But we decided that we really needed to also have something that we could look at to see, are we making a difference? So being a school psych, we had, we had to have a pre and a post-test. So that's just who we are. So we developed one for the students to fill out. So the students filled it out the very first day that they came to Phil, and you have a copy of that. And it was, we were, we told them that they needed to be 100% honest. We were not using this about, you know, they weren't going to be graded on it. It was just going to be for our information. And they had to rate themselves on a Likert scale, very much true of them, not at all true of them. And it really looked at self-esteem, problem-solving, resilience. We gave one to the teachers to fill out, and that was more how they were seen as academic students and how their character was looked at. And so from that information, our pre-test really showed that 48% of our kids wanted to get stronger physically. 52% wanted to get stronger mentally. And these are fifth graders. So I was very happily impressed with 52% saying that they wanted to get stronger mentally. Of those 52%, 22% wanted specifically to build up their self-esteem. When we started to really look at that data, it was very interesting because some of our students that the teachers rated as super high and probably not a student that they would have targeted to join our Phil group, they rated themselves very low. So not just kind of middle-of-the-road of the rest of the peers, really low. And that was a surprise to the teachers. They would have had no idea that the children were struggling because they looked like they had it all together. So I think it was, it's really important for us to see that some of the kids that we would never have targeted that have joined this group are really going to benefit from this program. So then the other children, we found that some of them that we were targeting because they were having either behavioral issues or academic concerns or social concerns, they rated themselves higher than we would expect. So they weren't quite, you know, fully aware of the struggles that they were having. So bottom line, we felt very strongly that this is going to impact every child that joins Phil, and we would love for every child in fifth grade to be able to. We'd like to eventually go to other grades, but starting with fifth. And another huge takeaway is that some children that we never would have touched have reached out to get some mental health support just because they have gotten to know us on a personal level, and they have been sought us out and talked about some pretty heavy things going on that they would not have had that point person had it not been for Phil. So we're pretty excited to do our post-test at the end to see that our students' self-esteem rating scales hopefully will improve, and so will our teachers' ratings. And we feel that the program overall hits all of the SEL Castle competencies. So, thank you.
I'm James Hood. I teach fifth grade, and I help out with the group. I just want to share two quick things that I've seen, not so much data-wise as they have, but just anecdotally, just to piggyback from Mrs. Shay. Connecting with students that are not in my homeroom or in my math class, I see them in the library, going to lunch. They give me a high five. I wave to them. So just increasing that amount of interaction among the fifth-grade students is nice to see. And the other thing is seeing them make the connection between the struggles they have physically at the workouts with struggles they might have academically, socially, with their peers, maybe at home. And just getting that understanding, like the book reinforces, is that it is about their effort that will help to improve whatever struggles they're having in whatever area. So just seeing that. And then the final thing is the encouragement. It can be pretty hard to get 10, 11-year-olds to encourage each other. So it has been nice to see them kind of pick up where the Phil group left off and include it in the classroom. So we do have a short video to share of students talking about their experiences with Phil.
Hi, my name is Charlie Kalnucki.
Hi, my name is Yara Azardine.
Hello, my name is Elsie Logan.
Hi, my name is Erika Monica.
Hi, my name is Mejica Janet.
Hello, my name is Nacha Mizelukma Cordia. My Phil name is Sapphire.
My Phil name is Mist.
My Phil name is Amber.
My Phil name is Books.
My Phil name is Coral. In Phil, we work together as a team, and we don't leave anyone behind. If someone is behind on the exercises, we do them with them. Phil is a mixture of fun, teamwork, strength, kindness, energy, and persistence.
In this program, you get pushed to your limits. You get rid of your fears and get discipline.
I love this group because of the encouragement and kindness that everyone passes around. In Phil, you will learn very valuable lessons like learning discipline, or no matter what, you will make it.
If you can't sprint, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl.
Phil has taught me that if you see someone struggling, then pick up the six. On a daily basis now, I try and help others to pick up the six.
In The Way of the Warrior Kid, the story teaches us about never giving up, trying new things, and pushing yourself. In each chapter of this story, you learn a lesson, an important one that stays with us forever.
You will have to wake up early, but it is worth it. If you have no friends or you have trouble with school staff, Phil is for you.
One Phil, we were carrying mats across the blacktop. We would all put into teams. If one of us couldn't keep up the pace, we would all fall out of accordance. One or two of us toppled over. In the end, we were working as one.
Phil has made me a better person. Phil has helped me reveal my true self. Phil has also helped me stay healthy, fit, and mentally strong.
Phil means so much to me. I love it so much. It makes me wake up in the morning and feel excited for the day.
This is the best thing I have ever been a part of in my whole entire life.
We promise those are their own words.
Well, thank you, Jamie, Tanya, and Tony. Now I would like to welcome Shelley Kelsey and Deb Kimmonow, who will be sharing about The Falcon Nest at Fisher Middle School.
Can I just make one comment?
Of course.
First of all, in full disclosure, I've known Mr. Pape, Mrs. Shay, and Mr. Hood for many, many, many years. I've heard amazing things in our school community about this program. And Mr. Pape, you got me emotional for the first time in two years in your closing remarks. So wonderful program. Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll be there Thursday. I won't be participating.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and board members. My name is Shelley Kelsey, and along with Deb Kimmonow, we created The Falcon Nest at Fisher Middle School this year to help our students find a quiet place to center themselves as they come in each morning. Since we couldn't bring the room to you, we wanted to give you a little experience of what it might feel like when the students arrive. So we created a very short, immersive video for you to watch. You'll notice the waterfall in the background. So we always have a fish tank or some nature scene going. The kids will oftentimes ask how the fish are, and they always want to see those. The next slide, we can just, oh, sorry, thank you. Thank you. So, yeah, I guess we're a little bit the opposite of Phil. The first glimmer of idea for this, we're calling it a program. We didn't see it as a program when we were first starting it. It really came from when I was a math teacher over at Matia. And I had a student who was out of school for two months for mental health reasons and had a very difficult time transitioning back to school. And for whatever reason, she found refuge in my classroom in the 20 minutes before school every day. And she just needed to be there, to just center herself and relax and be ready to try to make that transition back to school. And so I had the thought, this is a year of transition. Kids are coming back to school, sometimes for the first time in a long time. It's difficult. It's chaotic. Maybe they need something like that. Well, give a little good idea to Shelley, and then she just runs with it and makes it amazing. So we turned, it turned into what she called The Falcon Nest. And it really is intended just to be a safe, quiet, soothing place to start the day. So for kids who just need that, to center themselves, to get themselves mentally prepared, maybe they come from a house that's loud and noisy and chaotic, and they need just a minute before they transition. Maybe they don't want to hang out in a large, crowded group of students, and that will somehow add to their stress. So we wanted there to be a place that was just quiet and safe. We had no idea what it would turn into. But we also are giving them a couple of staff members that they can talk to if they ever have an issue. And so we were just trying to make this nice, safe, calm place. And in terms of castle, it kind of connects to everything, really. But relationship building in particular, we see a lot. Kids come in, sometimes in pairs, siblings, friends, and they just kind of come together and like have this moment or 10 minutes together, just, you know, to hang out. Because maybe they don't see each other for the rest of the day. They've also really connected with us. I mean, I have several examples of students who have just come and sit and talk to me about their sibling with special needs. Or I learned what a lion-headed rabbit is. You know, they're pets they'll talk about. Or I had a girl come to me to talk about how her previous five years, which were in private school, she never heard language like this in the hallway. She wanted to talk to me about those kinds of things. And so we really built relationships with these kids. And we try very much to allow them to do what they need to do in the room. So we really don't get in their faces. So, we really don't get in their faces. We just kind of let them come to us. We'll greet them, say hi. We have coloring pages for them and things to do. But we're really just trying to let them take the lead, let them get what they need. In terms of decision-making, some of these kids are choosing to come to this room instead of doing something else that might not have been as positive of a thing for them. But I really think of it in terms of self-awareness, realizing that I need this, that this sort of thing would really help me to get my day going on a more positive note.
So, we wanted to advertise to the students in several ways, just to let them know that the room existed as this was something new this year. And so, we created a slide and we run it in our student announcements, just to encourage them and just let them know that it exists. We oftentimes have people say, "What's the nest?" Like they'll come up and ask us because it says to reach out to us with questions. And then we get to inform them and let them know if that's something that they might like to come and take advantage of. So, who visits the nest? We have had every grade level. We have sometimes groups. As you'll see in those photos, sometimes it's just a couple students will come in. They come to socialize with their friends sometimes in a quiet environment. You can see the one little girl there holding her teddy bear. It's just a comforting area for them. Other times they come, just it's a rough start for the day and they just need a little more time to wake up. Middle schoolers don't like mornings. So, this is a nice time for them to transition. And as Ms. Kiminaw had said, a lot of these students, you know, we'll see them in the hallway as well and make connections with them just from our time together in the nest. So, here is another example. Some students will come in. Maybe part of their anxiety for the day is that they didn't complete a homework assignment or something wasn't working or they just needed a little more time. So, we give them that space as well. Or, as our buddy can see there, he's plopped down on a giant beanbag and he is our daily visitor. I'm actually going to let Ms. Kiminaw tell you a little story about him.
Well, he's the one who's been coming to us the most regularly, consistently, I guess. But we sort of have a routine. He comes in, face plants onto a beanbag, doesn't say a word unless we happen to be talking about something he's interested in, otherwise he's really asleep. Here's the bell ring, picks up his head and in his whiniest voice says, "I don't want to go." And I play the empathy role and say, "I know you don't." And this Kelsey always jumps in with, "But you can do it." And he walks out and then he comes back the next day and plays the same routine. On repeat.
Another way that we have invited students to come is by providing teachers with personal invites that they can give to the students. So, if they recognize a student in their classroom and they feel like maybe the nest, what we're doing in the nest could benefit the students, in the morning, they can personally give them this invite. It's not required to come, but it's just a little, "Hey, we noticed, you know, maybe this might be something that you could benefit from." And so, they are given those to hand out to the students.
So, this is the place where I think we got surprised. This is just a chart showing the records we kept of the attendance over the first quarter. And what's interesting is how consistent it really was. We've had an average of about four, a little over four students a day. And this has continued through the second quarter as well. We have had a couple days where no one came and a day where we had ten students, which turned out is really probably a little too much for a room where you're trying to keep it calm. I think the four, five, six range is really nice. But we haven't had the same four kids every day. And this is what surprised us. We've had students come in small groups or in pairs or even by themselves and then stay with us for two weeks, three weeks, and it starts to taper off. Almost as if they got what they needed, they realized they could do it, they move on. And it just keeps evolving. Different students keep coming. We still keep maintaining this around four or five students a day, which has really surprised us. You know, when we started this, we weren't keeping data. We didn't think of this as a program. We were just trying to provide a room where a few kids could come. We thought once the weather got cold, everyone would be flocking in because they wanted to get out of the cold weather. But that hasn't been true. It really has been the students who needed something a little bit more in the morning that are coming to us. And so, we're pretty excited about that, that like I said, isn't really what we expected. Incredible diversity, just in terms of all three grade levels, male, female, just all the different types of students you might see. We've really had a good representation of the school. We're guessing overall, we maybe touched about fifty students. Certainly, more than we were originally thinking was going to happen. So, we're very happy that we started this. We haven't taken polls exactly, but we've heard a lot of nice things. Staff like to come in and say, "We just want to hang out in here." But students often don't want to leave. Can't we stay, can I stay a little longer? And why can't I come on Wednesday? That's our PLC day, so they don't have the option. You know, that it's calm, relaxing. Recently, I even had a parent say that she had a student that just struggles to get out the door in the morning, doesn't really want to go to school and that this has really helped her encourage the student out, that he'd rather come to hang out in our room, you know, first and then it's just another way to maybe increase that attendance a little bit. So, overall, we're feeling pretty, pretty good about it.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to share. Thank you, Shelley and Deb. Finally, I would like to welcome Janine Wange, Brandy Bane, and Matia Valley High School students Grace Fessler and Michelle Jurick to share about Mental Health Matters Club at Matia.
All right, hi. I'm Janine Wange. I'm our mental health coordinator at Matia Valley. And I'm happy to be here with Brandy Bane, who's one of our Spanish teachers.
Hola.
And with Grace and Michelle, who are sophomores at Matia. So, we're here just to talk a little bit about our club that is actually, as I'm hearing everyone speak, we've been around the longest. So, we, we're going to talk a little bit about our Mental Health Matters Club. Okay, so, so really, it's truly an extracurricular activity that is open to anyone in the entire building. And we meet on Tuesdays after school and we have about thirty students who come and go on days when they can make it. Probably averaging, would you guys say, ten to twelve students at a time in our meetings? And so, you know, we were really, we were formed in the spring of 2018. And really, before that, we saw, you know, ten years before that, we saw mental health was becoming more and more of a, of something that we were all dealing with in schools and that was more prevalent and more of a need. And so, unfortunately, that year in 2017, 2018, our community was just hit hard with two deaths by suicide that year. Sorry. And so, so our students really, our students came out of the woodwork that year. And so, this is like, you guys were probably in elementary school at that point. But your predecessors really came out of the woodwork and came to all of our guidance staff and said, "We need to do more. We need to do something." And all of us said, "What, what do you want to do?" And they wanted to have more of a voice. And the high school students wanted to have more of a voice in terms of the things that were happening and that we were doing. Because, as you know, there've been, there's been a presence of mental health offerings in our buildings for a long time. But the fact that student voice in the high schools is more needed was brought to our attention at that time. And so, really, our club was started as a way to allow our students to have more voice in terms of what was going on and the type of things they wanted happening in the building to support each other mental health-wise. So, so that was really the catalyst for starting our program, that 2017-18 school year. And Brandy and I have been with the program since inception and just have really enjoyed all the different students we've had a chance to work with. Even through the pandemic, we managed to have activities last year at home remotely. And we'll go into a little bit more about that with our students and Brandy's going to cover that as well. But really, our mission and vision and everything that we do has been generated by students. So, even these slides we did during a club meeting. So, our students did the slides and I just kind of tweaked them a little bit. But our vision is to foster dialogue, promote awareness, reduce stigma, and empower all members of the Matia community regarding mental health. So, everything we do kind of leads back to that, to that mission and vision statement that we created. So, from our students' mouths, that's where our goal and benefits on this slide come from. And our students really felt like, and again, you guys will go into it a little bit more later, but they feel like the benefits are that you help others while learning more about mental health. You're able to create student-developed and led activities, which they've talked a lot about how when students run it versus staff, it makes other students feel more comfortable attending and just being part of something that's led by students and kind of backed by adults in the building. And to help peers feel more comfortable with their mental health. So, with that said, Brandy's going to talk a little bit about the history of the activities that we've done. And truly, every year, we have one event that is our every-year event, which is our Mental Health Awareness Week that happens in May. But other than that, there have been some activities that have come up and have been developed and have stuck with what we do at Matia and they've become part of our culture. One of those being the worm line that we'll talk about. But the other things are really based on the students that are in the club at the time. So, so what do the students feel is the culture, the feeling in the building? And what needs to, what needs to happen that year with those students? And we come up with activities and events that are going to support our community. So, we'll go into those activities.
So, as you can see, Janine and I are wearing shirts to represent the club. This is one of the things that the first full year that we were, of our inception, kids designed these. They sort of advertised for them and it was something that we would wear at various events. We don't have the funds to continue doing that right now, but hopefully one day we will. A few other things that we've done, like Janine mentioned the worm line. So, students came to us and said, "We all know about if we're in crisis and there's these suicide hotlines and there's information posted, you know, in our class houses, our counseling houses, things like that." We have even done some suicide prevention awareness activities. You know, passing little candies out with numbers on them. Or, we've written information or posted information in the bathrooms when kids get there where they can seek some help. But, you know, one actually of my past students in particular said, "I really wish there was something when we're just having kind of a bad day. We're not in crisis, but we don't know what to do, where to go." And so, because of that, we now have this worm line that's linked to our guidance house. And students can get to it through their, through the Matia Media website. And it's a Google form and they just fill out, "This is what I'm feeling. This is what I'm going through." If they know someone in the class houses, some of the support staff that they want to talk to, then they can specifically say, "I would like to talk to this person." If they're kind of unsure, then they just leave it up to us to make that decision. And, you know, Janine knows a little bit more personally because she works in the guidance department. But it actually has been helpful in us being able to reach out and help some students that maybe normally wouldn't be getting that support until they got to that crisis point. Some other things that we've done with our Mental Health Awareness Week, just we provide or create the students different activities daily to do. We've done things like Motivational Mondays. The first year, we snuck into school on a Sunday night and posted little emotional, motivational phrases in every student's locker and in every teacher's mailbox so that on Monday morning, they had a great start to that week. We have done similar to the Falcon Nest. When we used to do the Mustang Thirty, we would have a conference room available to students to come to just to hang out. They could, you know, just calmly interact with their peers. We had different activities for them like coloring pages, Legos that I stole from my children because they didn't need them anymore, fidgets, things like that. Trust me, my son gets more and more of the more expensive ones all the time. These were his kid ones, so he's good. So, you know, students were able to go there because that Mustang Thirty thing was a choice of, you know, go where you need to go to get the support. So, that was one thing that was offered. And one of the big things that we're still trying to work at getting reinstated is pet therapy. We had a student that was part of our club a couple years ago who for a capstone project her junior year of English, talked about doing something like pet therapy. And she brought a dog into her English classroom. And then that next year, at the start of school in our club, she's like, "You know, that was such a big hit and it was such a great experience. I really want us to try and do something like that." So, we were able to, on Wednesdays during all of our lunch periods, you know, of course, it varied on the availability of our volunteers, but bring dogs into our LMC in our collaboration room. Yes, as you can see, she's actually pictured there. But the students could sign up and just come in, either all of their lunch period or part of their lunch period, and literally just hang out with the dogs. Sometimes we would have some other activities like puzzles or coloring pages and stuff for them to enjoy as well. But really, they all were there, just they would sit around in a circle and all different types of students would come together in one group just to hang out with the different dogs that we had. Those are some of the big things that we've done. And then I'm going to let the girls here talk about our big project that we've started this year that was successful. We did something similar to it last year with some virtual peer mentoring meetings. But this year, we're thankful to be back in person because it was more successful. So, Michelle, you want to go ahead?
Yeah. So, our workshop that we did was a journaling workshop. And I feel like it was a big success because it helped teach my peers and I more about stress and how to journal in different ways more effectively. And I personally really enjoyed this activity because I volunteered the idea of decorating journals and like talking about stress. So, to see my idea being put into effect and for it to be really successful just made me feel like my voice was heard. And I just really enjoyed doing that.
So, we're going to close out with just some, these literally were taken from our club members who attended a meeting a few weeks ago and just on the spot, or, you know, "What do you guys, what do you like about the club?" And so, Grace is going to talk a little bit about what you see as a benefit of the club as well.
Hi, my name is Grace Fessler. I'm a sophomore at Matia Valley High School. Some goals I believe the club really works towards are making peers feel comfortable with mental health, whether it be talking about it or their own. Some benefits are making everybody feel together and welcomed. It really makes you feel like your voice is heard and your opinion matters. Overall, this club is a good place to grow connections with people because we are all focused on the same thing. I was, I was always really drawn to this club because I've always been super interested in mental health and speaking up for others who have yet to find their voice. And I know that everybody in the club is as interested as I am in this topic and that it is a warm, safe place.
So, for this, I said that the club reduces stigma surrounding mental health and makes you feel more comfortable with what you're going through. And I said this because before I joined the club, no one at the school really talked about mental health too much. And it was kind of like a big elephant in the room. But ever since I've joined Mental Health Matters, it's been easier to talk about what I and others are going through. And I'm very glad that it's provided such a comfortable space for everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you to all of our presenters. These activities are just examples of the important work that's being done throughout the district. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge some of the other social-emotional learning and wellness activities offered to students in different buildings throughout the district. Please note that this is not an exhaustive list, but rather just a sampling. So, at the elementary level, we have McCarty Connect, which is a program that is in collaboration with the Bonzi Valley High School at McCarty. There is GIRLS or Girls in Real Life Situations offered at Longwood Elementary, the Club Hub at Georgetown, Happy Spots at Gombert, Ambassador's Club at Kendall Elementary, and the Running Club at Owen Elementary. In middle school, we have the Gay Sexuality Alliance at Crowe Middle School and Hill Middle School, Mind and Body at Hill Middle School, Safe Students Allies for Everyone at Granger, Gregory, Fisher, and Still Middle Schools, Peer Mentors at Granger Middle School, and Student Voice and Empowerment, also led by Deb Kiminaw at Fisher Middle School. And at high school, we have Be Your Own You at Matia, Elevate, the Women's Empowerment Club at Matia Valley and Niqua, You Matter at Niqua Valley High School and Will Bonzi Valley High School, the I AM Initiative Student Committee at Matia Valley High School, SAGA, the Sexuality and Gender Acceptance at Matia Valley High School, and Defying Disorders at Will Bonzi Valley High School. And finally, supporting the mental health and wellness of students and staff is a collaborative effort. Alongside the important work of our administrators, staff, and students, we would like to offer sincere thank you to the partners in our community that are represented above. Thank you again for having us this evening and we are glad we could share this important work with all of you.
We are happy to take any questions or comments. And if you need anyone from up there, we just might need to call upon a volunteer from the group to answer anything that we can't.
Okay, how about Ms. Grover?
I wanted to thank you all. Thank you to the Falcon Nest. Thank you to the FYLs. And thank you to the Matia students and coordinators and teachers. I think this goes to show you that the goal of social-emotional learning can be done in different methods. And it's what fits your school, your students. And I love the way each of you brought out a different way to do that. I'm glad we have a coordinator because sometimes some schools don't know what is happening or what is available. So, it helps to have a coordinator because I didn't know about Phil. And so, if I'm a, somebody at another school... And so if I'm a, somebody at another school, you know, through the coordinator, I would realize, oh, that's something that I could incorporate. I just, I'm so glad we're doing this. So, thank you and I know all the schools are doing their own ways, different things. So, that's my only comment. I'm really excited. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Fozdick.
Thank you to all of you for being here. This has been one of my favorite board meetings so far, hearing about all these cool things that are happening. I wish I could, I know this is just a sampling of what we have in the district, but I wish I could bottle all of this up and shake it like glitter all over our schools. Because I feel like all of what the kids are learning from you is how to take care of themselves and each other. And along with academics and all the other things, we're trying to teach our kids to be successful people, successful community members. That's one of the most important. How to take care of ourselves and how to take care of each other. And I'm really, really grateful that we have all of you doing this in the places that you are. I think it's especially exciting for fifth graders to have the opportunity to learn how important the tie between mental and physical health can be and that they're capable of more than they thought. For middle schoolers, I can't, in my mind, I was picturing for the very short time that I commuted to this city, my time on the metro train. That was my Falcon Nest before I walked into my building. It was my quiet-ish space, right, before quiet cars. But it was my transition space and it was really important to me. I didn't mind the commute because that time was really important. I think especially in middle school, that's critical. And at the high school level for Matia Mental Health Matters, I am so excited to see the students get involved in the leadership of that. At that point, the student voices are really blossoming and important and becoming these leaders that we're growing in our district. And so having their involvement and their voice, I think, is really critical. So, thank you for all of that. I think those, I don't have any other questions, but I'm excited to see these things grow. Thank you.
Ms. Dumbing.
You know, everything, much of, much of the way I feel has been echoed. But again, the, it shows how there is, it doesn't have to be cookie cutter. No one has to say, "This is the way that it has to be done." And it is, it's invigorating, it's inspiring. I love hearing the messages from the students and just seeing their reaction, their excitement. I love when, you know, the young students say, "I have to get up early, but this is why and I can't, I'm excited to get there." So, it just really makes such a big difference. You know, I, I love when we do, when we can offer things for students outside of those, outside of that normal time and just hope that those students that can benefit or could benefit can find a way to potentially get there if they can't because it, it sounds like you're just doing some phenomenal, phenomenal things. And I loved hearing from the students. That middle school timeframe, it's, we all know that can be such the, that's such a difficult period that the middle schoolers, they're just, they're trying to figure it out. And so just giving them that space, I love that it's just, it's a very different, because they have so many things going on and it can be so crazy with at the middle school level. So, giving them that space to just quiet in is really nice. And again, as, as Ms. Fozdick said, just the leadership at Matia, at the high school level. We have been hearing from our students and their willingness to speak up. I applaud the Matia students who've said, you know, "We, we're hurting. We recognize and we want to make sure that we continue." Thank you for you two for coming and sharing what it means to you and speaking on behalf of other high school students there because we definitely love hearing what you're feeling, what you're doing to help better, to take care of yourselves and your peers. So, thank you so much. And thank all of you for caring enough to make sure that we know how important it is for all of us to take care of ourselves. Thank you for helping our students from a very early age know that this is as important and oftentimes more important so that they can do the academics that they so desire to do. So, thank you.
Mr. Carrubus.
Couple of points. One of the lenses that I use when I key your presentations, when I review board material, is, does it make students better or worse? And does it put students first? And, and we got two wins here and easy answers to those questions. So, thank you for that. It's a simple way to, to look at the situation and just sum it up. The, you know, from a board level, you look at, you spend a lot of time on district goals, board policies, and you don't get to see its application through all the way to the students. And sometimes that's good, sometimes that's bad. But at this case, it's awesome. And so to hear, much like you like to have student-led presentations, from a board perspective, it is great to hear from administration, staff, and students so that we can take those little snippets that you give us and then reflect on board policy and district goals and say, "What do we need to do to improve this?" You know, the board added social-emotional as an aspect to District Goal One. And we might not have done that if it weren't for, you know, the community, staff, and administration bringing that up as a, as a need. So, that's, that's a second reflection. The third one is the last slide, which is the involvement of the community. You know, we talked about it, board, administration, staff, and students. But to ask for schools to do all this work, it doesn't. It can't be all things to all people. And so to build on the comments to this point, I think it's, it's very important to recognize our partnerships with the community. We're, we're talking about programs that happen, you know, and services that happen outside schools at some point. And, you know, we talk about additional funding and the foundation is a, is a great way. So, I think it, it's a kudos to the district as a whole to say, "We have a program and we recognize that we have our limits and there's people in the community that specialize and do things better than us. And we all come together to put students first." So, thanks.
Ms. Jane.
Well, thank you guys for the presentation today. For me, what you guys presented only reaffirms our notions of how great our teachers are and our staff is in this district to go beyond the classroom and for the leaders of all the programs that were talked about today and also mentioned, for our teachers and staff to support these programs before school, after school. I want, I think we all thank you for that dedication and time commitment. What really struck me about all of the programs mentioned was the organic nature of it. Whether it was staff initiated or student initiated, there was an observation, an astute observation by someone who had the ability to articulate it to somebody else. And then through that communication, someone had the energy and motivation to make that a reality. And I think that is exactly what our students need. I don't think there's anything we can do here that allows you to do, that, that really codifies what you guys did. But I do echo the sentiments of some of my board members that stated, "If there's an ability to replicate something that's working really well," I look forward to that kind of exchange of information so that it, we don't recreate the wheel, but that we're able to share these wonderful programs that we have. I'm just filled with so much, I, I'm just filled with so much joy and happiness listening to, to what you guys presented with the Phil folks and the pre and post-assessments and trying to really understand, "Why is this working and who is it working for? And why, why is it working for the students? We didn't anticipate necessarily needing it." I mean, I think again, that speaks to the pervasive need of social-emotional learning and maybe how much we need to learn more about it. So, thank you all and I look forward to hearing more about these programs.
Thank you. Mr. Rising.
Ms. Michelli, Ms. Forkner, thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing. Thank you for the mental health first aid training that we're doing. That's wonderful. I've gone through it myself. I know what a wonderful program it is. I don't really have any questions, just to the educators, the staff members, Grace and Michelle, the students. Thank you for all that you're doing in your buildings respectively. You know, the tough part about all of this is identifying students who are struggling. And what I enjoyed about this is the progression that, the way you laid out the presentation. Because at the elementary school, we saw a building up of resiliency, of grit. But at the same time, being empathetic and lifting other students up and, and being there for them. At the middle school, we saw that area to decompress and just kind of let their guard down, which is important, as Ms. Dumbing said, for, for middle school students because they oftentimes feel that pressure. They're trying to figure themselves out. And at high school, that's probably the toughest part because, you know, they, most of the time, we will not identify the kids that are struggling. But we need to keep creating that culture within every single one of our schools that all the students know that they're not alone. You know, these, these things can be great for communicating. It's, it's the bloodline for our kids of communicating with their friends, right, at middle school and high school. The downfall of those, though, is that oftentimes our students don't know that their fellow students are going through the same struggles that they are. And that message needs to get out, that they're not alone and they're not the only ones going through things. And I think by continuously creating this culture in our schools and of our students, we will get there, but it will take work. I'm extremely impressed with this board. For, I think, three or four years now, we've had a social-emotional goal as part of Goal Number One. And I thank Dr. Tally for putting Ms. Forkner in place. And, and we've got a real roadmap of where we're going now. We will hit bumps in the road, but I'm encouraged, more encouraged than I've ever been, that we're on the right path. So, thanks to everybody.
Yeah, so it's hard to follow when everybody has all the words that you want to say. But I will reiterate some of the things. I mean, this, if you went back and looked at the district goals four years ago, five years ago, there was not social-emotional learning or those words in anything. This board saw the importance of that and made sure our goals were changed to incorporate that. And it's our number one goal. And we actually made the wording so that those, those words come in front of academics because it is such an important way of supporting our students and driving their success and happiness. And I'm an absolute believer in this and I was thrilled with the creativity and the diversity Ms. Grover pointed out and others of the programs that you showed us as examples. And I thank you for that. I know each student is different and they need different ways of being supported on this topic. And I will say, I just encourage all of you to keep looking and looking for ways to continue to grow these activities. I was thrilled that you put dog therapy at the top. I've been a dog therapist for more than 20 years and I'm available and willing to continue to do that. So, I didn't plant that picture. Yeah. But it's, you know, Mark talked about being emotional. I get emotional about some of the things I've witnessed through that program. And, and I can see all these other programs, how helpful they are. So, I'm eternally grateful to all of you and please keep, keep going. And I love hearing from the students too. That's fantastic. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Next up, we're going to talk about elementary social studies curriculum. Resources presented by Joan Peterson, our Director of Curriculum for Elementary.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you, Board of Education members, and Dr. Tally for making the opportunity tonight for us to be able to share with you some recommendations from the elementary level in terms of social studies, the ongoing work that has continued. And tonight, we bring forward for the board to consider a resource that can support our instruction and our student learning moving forward. Our purpose this evening is to be able to share with you our recommendation for a resource that will support the curriculum that was approved last spring for K-5 social studies. We'd like to request that the board consider it and, and provide its feedback potentially for the February 7th board meeting that will be upcoming. And upon board approval, if that should be the case, then our intention would be to implement instruction with the adopted resource beginning in the fall of 2022 and throughout that school year through the spring of 2023. This next slide illustrates, and I can't highlight enough, how our department is so pleased to be able to share the names of these members. The social studies, social, social studies committee members is actually a group of in excess of 80 teachers who have contributed over the last two years to the work that we've done, beginning with crafting the curriculum and writing our essential compelling and supporting questions, to looking at some resources. And then the names you see here are from across all grade levels, K-5, as well as support staff and buildings from both, both ends of the district. In the middle of the district, we have all schools represented, teachers, grade levels, and support staff. And these staff members out of that group of that larger 80, this fall, with all of the other things that they were prioritizing in terms of student relationships, transitioning back, creating peak moments for our students as we came back face to face and had opportunities to learn with all students back in the classroom. The teachers that are, whose names are on these slides said, "On top of all of that, we would like to be a part of finding the resource that will make learning, social studies instruction exciting for kids and engaging." So, I just want to make sure that these staff members are recognized for what they agreed to contribute this fall for our ongoing work in terms of social studies, but also acknowledging that they're part of a much larger group that has gotten us to where we are today. So, bringing us here today, the last time we had a chance to present to the board about social studies was when we brought to the board our curriculum for adoption. And that curriculum is really what do we want kids to know and be able to do in the realm of social studies. So, what we had brought in the spring of last year were our essential compelling and supporting questions. The board approved those. And, and upon that, last spring, we had our first opportunity to talk with teachers about our curriculum that would support the Illinois Learning Standards in the area of social studies. So, we, our first training for our full staff of 600-plus teachers was last spring, knowing that our next step in the journey would be that we would look to secure resources to support that instruction. So, that was our work, our charge for this fall. Included in that, these bullet points on this slide really highlight, we're, we're picky customers. We have very high expectations for what we want to be able to use with kids and, and to be able to support teachers so that they feel like they have items at their disposal that allow them to teach with felicity and ease and that we have plenty of opportunities for them to pick and choose from what's available. So, as we were looking to decide what it is that we would consider, our larger social studies committee did have an opportunity to look at several published materials. studies committee did have an opportunity to look at several published materials and take a look at what they offer, how they were designed. To Board Member Krubas's point, how much do they put students first? How do they make things better for students? Those were certainly two things, very like-minded, the work of the committee. What, what is it that we can find that will, that will make learning engaging and inquiry-based for students? So, we considered all of these items that you see on this slide. And what we bring forward to the board for consideration tonight is a published product called TCI, Social Studies Alive. It is, it supports instruction, learning, and engagement for students K-5, so it would be the same resource for all students and teachers across the district. Some of the things that it offers, there is a digital portion to the platform as well as print. The activities are highly engaging, and all of them are hinged on the college career and civic framework, the C-3 framework that is in place kindergarten through 12th grade. There's alignment for that. That's at the heart of the way they designed their lessons within the program. Certainly, TCI, one of the top things we looked for is, is it aligned to our Illinois learning standards? And is it research-based? And so, if you look at its, its reviews, including on-ad reports, TCI is, has provided districts similar things that we were looking for as far as how we could make sure that we were engaging the students in the core concepts of economics, civics, geography, and history. And those four core concepts are present in the resource, beginning at kindergarten all the way through 5th grade. You'll notice on this slide, it does say hands-on lessons, debates, and multimedia learning games. There is so much to Social Studies Alive that it will allow teachers to pick and choose, but at a time where maybe we need to figure out how we can all engage with one another with multiple perspectives and an openness for dialogue and debate, this is a product that we found creates a setting where that can occur within the content that's appropriate developmentally for students at this age group and is still aligned to the Illinois learning standards. So, we, when it says social studies alive, I really feel like it made our committee feel pretty alive. The teachers were, the teachers were thrilled with, so our, our teachers who piloted this had an opportunity to use all of the materials that are a part of the product, the print materials, the digital materials. One of the other pieces that was very helpful, TCI is definitely a fluid published program, not static. So, it is, the most recent version that we were working on or working off of was published in 2021. So, they stay up to speed with what the learning standards are across the 50 states to make sure that they're still relevant. But they also are constantly taking feedback from teachers. TCI actually stands for Teachers, Teacher Curriculum Institute. So, they're, they're very much hinged on what they hear from teachers about what they need to do next. So, our teachers really found that it was exactly what they were needing to be able to support students. In fact, our next slide, these are direct quotes from some of our teachers testimonials who are a part of the pilot. But probably, in my years as a curriculum director, the piece, the number on this, this slide was, we had 100% of the teachers in the pilot who said, this would be a match to support our instruction, student learning, and student engagement. Certainly, no published product is perfect, and, and we, while we have not fully utilized TCI, I'm sure that we will find that there will be ways that we want to make sure that we can supplement or enhance or enrich what they provide. But the positive feedback from the committee was that this is something that they feel like would be beneficial. It also, I feel like with the name Social Studies Alive, we have not had a chance to refresh and rejuvenate social studies in a long time at the elementary level. When it came to revising our curriculum and our materials under the Illinois learning standards, we started with ELA, we moved on to math, then we did science. So, I won't call this the caboose because I have lots of other things that I want to work on with our department and with teachers. So, this is by far not our caboose. But it is the fourth of those four main areas that we're getting to. And so, I'm excited to be able to continue to work with teachers in our department because this is something that I feel like is going to give everybody sort of the jolt for social studies that, like I said, can be very compelling for what we want, want students to be able to achieve in terms of discourse, dialogue, openness, mindfulness of peers. So, what, what we're asking for this evening is to, you consider the opportunity for potentially the February 7th board meeting to approve the purchase of TCI Social Studies Alive for all K-5 classrooms and students and teachers across the district. Should that be the case, we would be prepared on March 4th, which is our District-Wide Institute Day, to provide some initial training on the resource to our full K-5, 600 teachers, staff and staff. That would be led by experts from TCI and, and experts specific to each grade level. So, kindergarten teachers would be able to talk kindergarten content and resources, first grade, and so on. The next step, like I said, no published product is perfect. So, should this be approved for purchase, we do know that we have some more work to do, which is, what we would do next is, we do know that there are still some state mandates that will go into place that we will need to make sure that we have an opportunity to include in our resource and our curriculum as well. So, our social studies committee will continue to work on that, and, and as we implement potentially with Social Studies Alive as our resource, we'll be looking for supplemental materials, not just to make sure that we can include the content from our additional state mandates, but also what are the areas where TCI maybe doesn't have the IPSD 204 flair that we like to also include in our instruction, the art of instruction that happens in our buildings with our excellent teachers? So, the supplemental material work would be ongoing, as well would be our professional development. The, one of the biggest shifts with our social studies instruction is the inclusion of inquiry, which really means that the, it's student-driven, and the learning, the learning evolves. And we want to continue to be able to provide professional development to our teachers to help them add to their toolbox and skill set for instructional practices in the inquiry realm, so that will be on our priority list as well. I am certainly glad to answer questions and want to thank you for your time, but I'd be glad to field any questions and answer them to the best of my ability.
Mr. Krubas.
Yeah. I support the adoption of this instructional material. I'm looking forward to it. I do have some business questions. I'll direct them to you, but if you want to give a lifeline to Mr. Akarius, feel free. Because he answered my questions prior to the meeting, but I still think it's important for this to be part of the public. So, we're not solely purchasing books, we're purchasing some digital license. Can you tell me some generalities or specifics about the number of licenses that we're getting for the teachers and the students?
Sure. So, we would be purchasing, it would be, what we're requesting approval for would be a six-year purchase of both digital and print materials for all teachers and students across the district. So, that would be, that would be in excess of approximately 600 teacher licenses for six years, digital. Print materials for that same size group. We, and it would be digital access and print materials for more than 10,000 students for six years. And included in that, any revisions that they would make along the lines with that digital piece would be fluid for our resources as well. It is also written in a way that is already naturally aligned to be able to be utilized with Google Classroom. So, it was the, the ease of use for students in the, in the pilot classrooms, partially because of how we modified instruction over the last couple of years. It was a, a nice alignment there. So, for the, for the fiscal piece, it would provide us an amount of time that we would be able to hone our skills with teaching within the resource for over the next six years, but also give us the opportunity after those six years, if we were feeling like we needed to add or pivot, we would be in a place where we could do that.
Great. My second question, reflecting on District Goal 3, to manage our resources efficiently and effectively, what's the approximate cost for this instructional material?
The approximate cost is right around, just over a million dollars, which is also closely in line with other materials that we typically purchase to support a group that size. In my time in this position, I will say, the price is typically, in some of the other things we've purchased, it has not included as, this is robust in terms of some of, it comes with student manipulatives, activity cards. I mean, there, there is a lot to choose from. So, but just over a million dollars would be the purchase price.
Yeah, nothing further.
Ms. Jane.
I, I really don't have any questions. I just, a few things resonated with me is, again, the robust nature of the curriculum and the fluidity of it, that the fact that there, it, does that mean that they update it with like more recent examples that students would find more relatable? Would that be an example of?
That would be one example. It's not, it wouldn't be like haphazard updating. Rather, what they do is they have reps that are assigned to the districts who stay in immediate contact with me and then therefore the committee, taking recommendations on a regular basis for what can we strengthen or improve, bringing that back to their team. And so, it wouldn't be like radical changes or pivots, but more fine-tuning and trying to be responsive for what the teachers are saying would either match the needs of their state standards or would assist them in making sure that the instruction comes more alive for students in the classroom. So, they stay connected to us, we provide suggestions, and then in an ongoing fashion, they make updates, but we're not talking about something weekly. We're talking about something that is, there's a process for it, but over time, it is possible or likely that six years from now, there will be even more improvements to the program based on feedback from actual practitioners and students, based on the responsiveness of what TCI is wanting to provide.
That's great. And, and the fact that you got such an overwhelming vote for this, I think speaks volumes. So, I look forward to seeing how this plays out.
Thank you.
Ms. Deming.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, very, very, very in-depth. A couple of questions. I, I think it's fantastic that we had such a well-rounded representation from the staff that had a chance to take a look and receive feedback. Just wondering, we're, not being familiar, the makeup of the names that you shared and had a chance to review this, are they, was, was this a diverse teacher population that had a chance to review?
There was diversity among the teacher population. It was a, probably a smaller representation than we had out of our group of 80, but yes, there was diversity present. And what we found, we, we offered to this group that was a part of it, an initial training and then question and answer sessions. And when the teachers came to the question and answer sessions to provide, to get more professional feedback or development during the pilot, they brought questions from their peers, so much so that at Calashaw, it started with one 3rd grade teacher wanting to participate at, at the inception of the pilot, and because of the interest from her other teammates, the full team of 3rd grade teachers. And that, that only, that illustrates, I would say, even if the other people didn't join the pilot, they brought questions from peers. So, that made the diversity a little more robust. So, yes, diverse in, our team of 80 was more diverse than our smaller group.
Thank you. You know, looking at the Illinois mandated units of study guidance, there were six different curriculum areas, and you alluded to that, in addition to, I guess they don't consider it as a specific curriculum area, but the disability history and awareness as well. So, when we look at TCI, do they somehow cover each of those areas? Or whatever additional material you look to supplement, will, will make sure that those mandated units are covered from an Illinois standpoint?
That would be the primary goal of like the next step of the work. Yes, certainly, we want to make sure that we have, and not just for the mandate because it's the right thing to do. And so, we, yes, we will make sure that there are materials that if they're not present in TCI, that, that will be the next piece that we will do, whether it be trade books or primary source documents that we find, again, appropriate for K-5 students. So, certainly, yes, that will be a next step of what we do. TCI does, is intentional about trying to make sure that they have representation in both their primary source documents and illustrations, and then some of their questions from groups that have been typically underrepresented in the past. And of course, there can always be more growth there and always more, but you will, throughout the curriculum, you see everything from Chinese Americans to, to Black and African-American representation, Hispanic, Jewish, Native American, and then Native American, specifically making sure to honor all the specific tribes. So, they're purposeful in their work, but we'll need to make sure that we are even more purposeful in what we continue to add, not just for the mandates, but moving forward to make sure that our students really feel like they can connect with the content based on their own lives and their own perspectives.
Great. That was good, that was one of my next questions that, or comments, so I really appreciate that. How will, that supplemental material, will that be done district, on a, on a district-wide basis so that all buildings will use the same, or will each individual school look at that supplemental, supplemental material?
So, we would do it, we typically do it so that it's similar across the district because we know that the diversity that exists, even if it's smaller percentages, it's, it's, it's pervasive across the district. So, we want to make sure we have materials that all of this, all the schools and all the students can access. Our pending approval of this resource, our intention would be to start as soon as this summer. We want to teach with the resource to know what we want to supplement, but we already have our eyes on some of the content that we know is a part of not just state mandates, but good social studies instruction. So, we would start as soon as this summer, not because we feel like this is lacking, but because we know that we want to make it even more robust with some, some things that we know could enhance it. But yes, it would be done at the district level, and the materials would be provided for all teachers and students across the buildings.
And then just lastly, usually when we're doing, presenting new curriculum, it's, it's provided an opportunity for anyone who wants to have a chance to, to view it to do so. Do we have physical representation that will be housed at the district office or that residents will be able to?
Yes, we can't, so the, the digital piece there, on the TCI website, there is a way for that to be viewed. We can figure out a way to provide that. I don't know that that was included in the board memo, but there is digital samples there. I do have some print samples, but I, I can work with them to make sure that we have some additional print materials that could be reviewed. We'll house them up here. I have some, but I think I maybe have to fill a couple holes, but people, yes.
Doug will, I'm certain, I'm certain Doug will help work with that.
Yeah. We can fill some holes to make sure that people have a chance to review it, which is really the intention, so that both you and the community have a sense of the, the rich materials we would be putting in front of kids.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Mr. Rising.
So, thank you, Joan, for all the work that you and the staff members have done on this. Social studies curriculum, K through 5, is pretty cut and dry, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's inquiry, it's, it's government and civics, it's geography, it's economics, financial literacy, and it's US history. I, I mean, that's pretty much the areas that they cover. You know, are we assessed right now? We're not assessed on anything, social studies, are we? It's just reading and mathematics, correct? So, yeah, I trust you guys did the work, looked at the curriculum, made sure it aligned to the standards. I've reviewed the standards. They're pretty, it's the same stuff that I learned in elementary school. It hasn't changed dramatically. I mean, it gets more in-depth in certain areas. But, yeah, I'm, I'm confident in this, and as long as it, as long as you feel that you'll be able to roll this out, and the teachers will be able to get trained on it, and I'm sure the company's going to do a kind of a train-the-trainer thing with you, and you'll work with Candy and everything, and you guys will get that rolled out. So, thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Spazdick.
Thank you for all that information. Like Board Member Jane and Board Member Rising have said, that, that 100% go from the teachers who are actually the experts in the classrooms and in this field, for me is all the reassurance I need, that this is the right thing. But I also really want to applaud you and the committee for intentionally searching for something and zeroing in on something that's focusing on teaching our kids positive discourse and debate techniques, and how to listen to one another and learn about one another and the world around them. So, I really appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to seeing how the kids use this in the schools and the teachers do with it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Grover.
Thank you for the presentation. I think if I had this, I would be more interested in social studies.
That was one of the quotes they said, like, my kids love social studies. And I'm like, I know, but don't forget about math. We got a lot to do. But they, they, they felt really energized, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, I mean, just, just the title itself, you know, Alive, and it is, with all the hands-on lessons, debates, I'm glad there is a book as well as digital because, it's funny, I still like reading books, and I know a lot of parents, you know, with the, everything is online now, they also prefer some, some of their children having their books. So, I think that's great, that. If you can explain, I'm having a little difficulty between how it's aligned to Illinois state standards, yet we have state mandates and, and things are coming up every year. It's fluid, yet we have to supplement, we have It's fluid, yet we have to supplement, we have to find supplements. So they will not provide supplements that will qualify for the mandates that come out?
That's correct. Oh, and I wouldn't speak to TCI. They're actually super responsive, but they would be responding to 50 states. So if we had ideas, I'm sure they would be willing to work with us. But the truth is, the way that it's built in right now, every unit and lesson, the sequence is generally immersing kids in some background knowledge. So whether it's an image or a piece of text, then the next step is for the students to make connections to their own life. And then the third is to then share through discourse their multiple perspectives. And you see that repeated over and over again in their lesson design. Toward the end of every unit, then it says, now apply the learning that we've done to your state. So what they do there is open the door for some enrichment and enhancement that makes sense for Illinois. So whether it's a geography portion and we are talking about different ways to, that people adapt and learn within an environment, their environment matters to them, then the wrap-up to that is, now consider Illinois. So when it comes to the mandates, we may have to find the places where that naturally fits best with their curriculum. And then we may also find that it would be a standalone where we need to meet the mandate requirements with some content that's not included in TCI. So no, they won't, they don't necessarily do that supplemental work, but it was something we were anticipating from the beginning and allows us to continue to work together as a committee. So I, there's a good piece to that as well. Yeah, jump in.
So as Joan was saying, most of these publishers are like national publishers, so they're publishing around the country. We're the first state that just adopted or mandated the teaching of Asian-American history. So the publishers wouldn't have anything like that already available for that. And so that's why, when she's saying responding to all the different 50 states and what they have, a lot of those things, we're going to have to look for, how do we supplement? They might be able to work with us on how to supplement that, but in such a short time period, there's going to be probably a lot of work that we have to do ourselves in looking at where are our gaps related to that.
So we might purchase a supplement from somewhere else? Is that what usually happens? Do we?
So it could be, it could be the case, like if we're trying to make sure that we're including contributions from a certain group, we may picture, purchase a picture book for every classroom that has a representative from that group that demonstrates strong leadership. So if our compelling question is, what makes someone a good leader? Then we will look at the mandate and say, this would be an excellent place to include some Asian-American history. So we're going to find an excellent Asian-American leader and insert that to that compelling question. So it's most likely that the supplemental materials for elementary would be something along the lines of picture books or other primary source documents. You know, it won't be a purchase for a million dollars like this that would be supplemental. We'll try to keep, we'll try to keep in mind, yes, but mostly they're smaller purchases, very targeted.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Like everybody said, that 100% really truly is amazing for such a large group to get that type of response. I know ahead of time, there were some questions asked around the curriculum and I believe Ms. Grover asked a question about how long, or what is this replacing and how long has that been in place? And I thought that was something that would be beneficial to repeat for the public.
Certainly. So we have not done a social studies curriculum revision or materials refresh in more than 10 years. And so our print materials reflect that. And then prior to the spring, our written curriculum was also not directly aligned to the Illinois learning standards. So our first, our first goal, our work over the last couple of years was aimed towards last spring where we are aligned and matching with Illinois learning standards and then now finding a resource, a refresh of a resource that also matches that work. So it's been more than 10 years since we've, some of that again was the timing of when we were going to tackle each content area under the standards. But like I said, this is the fourth one. So if that's helpful to know, more than 10 years.
Well, thank you. So thanks to you and to the whole team for working through this and coming up with hopefully a great resource for the district and our students. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time and your consideration.
Okay, lastly, we have our legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone have any items? I have a couple of things. Okay. So this week, we will have on Friday, the Lenn meeting is happening, so that's in the morning. And then at lunchtime, there is a large unit districts for the whole state of Illinois. So before I talked about, there's a DuPage, or a DuPage, this area type of large district that's getting started. That's not that meeting. The meeting on Friday is for across the whole state, so Rockford will be there. And so I'll be attending that. So we'll see what comes out of those meetings. And then I wanted to remind people that IASB is looking for proposals for conference presentations. So if anyone has any thoughts or ideas, it's great to have our board get that in and have some continued visibility and leadership there. Anything else? If not, I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.